Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the first regular school committee meeting of the Beverly Public Schools for the 2020-2021 term. Today is January fifteenth, 2020, and I'd first like to welcome our newest members who are joining us up here today, and also welcome back our returning members. First order of business is to recognize that BevCam is joining us as they always do. They will be live broadcasting this session as well as posting it on their website. And thank you, BevCam. Recorded versions are available. Our first order of business is to open with the pledge. Since the time of our last meeting, our regular meeting, the school community in the city has lost a number of cherished and long-serving educators, coaches, and advocates for our students, so I'd ask that you join me in a moment of silence after the pledge. And if we might, I'd ask Mr. Mulady to lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our next order of business brings me great pleasure. It's to recognize our students for their achievements in athletics for the fall season. If I could ask Principal Betty Taylor to join us up front. We have a number of students we'd like to recognize.
Best part by far.
I'm very pleased to present these recognitions to our students in the fall season of sports for the Northeast Conference. Mr. Keith is at both the wrestling competition and the girls hockey game tonight, so he couldn't be here. So we'll recognize students by their sports. If you guys want to come up this way and shake hands with Ms. Dable and Dr. Trocheck. So first of all, for football, Duncan Moreland. Karen. For field hockey, Haley Anderson. Amber Burn. For girls cross country, Heidi Everhart. For girls soccer, Cindy Anderson. For ball, Braden Clark. John, I'm sorry, I hope I say this correctly, John Calamoclet. For boys soccer, Taj Avola. For boys cross country, Jackson Wood. I understand that we had an outstanding season, and I'd love to see you all here. It's customary that we take a brief recess so we can congratulate the athletes. And if you don't want to join us for the rest of our evening, you can just stay for
we have an open forum for citizen concerns. They can either be non-agenda-related items or something on our agenda. Ms. Bergeron, do we have anyone signed up to speak? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, we will move along. Our next order of business, we have two sets of meeting records. The meeting records from our December eleventh, 2019, meeting, and those from our organizational meeting on January sixth, 2020. For the benefit of the new members, it is customary to abstain for minute approvals if you were not in attendance. However, with the benefit of BevCam recording and knowing that our candidate elects were present, I'll leave it to your discretion if you wish to vote in favor of minutes at this December eleventh, 2019, minute meeting. So first, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the December eleventh, 2019, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Lurenne Visnick and Mayor Kay Hill for the second. Do we have any comments, edits, suggestions for this set of meeting minutes in front of us? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, and I assume abstain, Ms. Ferretti?
Abstain, and I was it, oh no, I think I was present for this one. Yes, I was present.
Okay, so four, so seven to zero. I do believe everyone was present, just not necessarily at the table. Okay. Thank you. And moving along, we have our school committee minutes from our organizational meeting that was held at the Beverly Middle School on Monday, January sixth, 2020. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. And do we have any comments, edits, or corrections to make on this set of minutes?
Madam President.
Ms. Visnick.
I would like to, I would like to state that I don't, I'm concerned with this set of meeting minutes because I don't believe they provide enough detail. My goal to my constituents is to provide as much transparency and accuracy as possible, and I don't believe these minutes reflect the reasons that I gave to an objection on an item. So I would like people to be able to see why I voted the way I voted, and I believe I provided that. I'm not requesting that the set of meeting minutes be amended. However, I am, I would like to request that moving forward, we make sure we provide as much detail as possible, because the devil is in the details. And especially when someone provides, whatever their reasons are, maybe their facts, maybe their opinions, I think it's important that we capture that. I know we have the policy relative to, you know, not trying to quote everybody, but at the same time, I think that you can capture the gist of what someone says without quoting them verbatim, and I think that's incredibly important when we don't have BevCam. So we're very fortunate to have BevCam for most of our meetings, but I would ask you, Madam President, if we can try to strive to have BevCam at all of our meetings. And at this particular meeting, we didn't have BevCam, so it just makes it that much more important that we capture the details.
Noted. Anyone else?
I was hoping that moving forward, as far as minutes, I know most meetings are on BevCam, but that we could capture more the professionalism and the general flow of the meeting on the minutes rather than quote opinions and certain things that may or may not have been said by other members. I feel that sometimes things that are said are not warranted to be captured in the minutes. You know, they're expressed at the table, and I think that's valuable that we share our opinions, but I am hoping for this next term to really stay the course on professionalism and have the minutes reflect that in this body.
I'll call on myself. Dr. Trocheck and I had a meeting just prior to the end of the last term where we talked about the minutes and some conventions that we could employ to make sure that when BevCam is recording, we can refer the reader of minutes to conversations and dialogue to capture that. Appreciate both the sentiments brought to the table. I think that this and the agenda format and descriptors on our agenda are something that we could bring to a committee of the whole, to a working session, to get some consensus on what should be in and what should not be in. Were there any other corrections or comments on this set of meeting records?
We were all present, so all those in favor of capturing the meeting minutes, approving the meeting record? That's seven to zero? Thank you. And moving right along, we now have items by consensus. And again, for our new members, the items by consensus, and for our viewing audience at home, are a list of warrants that are expenses incurred and the different payables that the district has to pay. These include payroll and some other expenses that we see in our weekly packets. So the central item, a central office keeps these items and then summarizes them here for us to approve. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the list of warrants as outlined in our agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mulady and Ms. Ferretti. Without concern, all those in favor? Okay, that's seven to zero. Thank you. And now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our student representative, Olivia Aronberg. She is our student rep to the school committee, and please give us your report.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So right now, we are midway through our school's winter activities, and midterms are approaching us in the coming weeks. So back on December fourteenth, we had a professional development day with no school, and teachers came together in the library to help formulate newer and better curriculum plans for their students. On December fifteenth, there was a victory for the BHS hockey team in their season opening. On December nineteenth, we had the BHS Winter Concert, which is a performance by over a hundred different students in all the performing ensembles, which included strings, concert band, and jazz band, and all choral groups. From December twenty-first to January second, we had winter break, and although academics were put on hold, the sports teams and music performing ensembles remained active in the community. On January third, we had a Start With Hello! assembly during school that was presented to the sophomores and juniors by speaker Terrence White from the Sandy Hook Promise. And this presentation was built around how to create an inclusive society in school and prevent isolation. On January seventh, there was a DECA competition at the Endicott College, and we had an amazing overall performance by BHS students, and congratulations to everyone who moved on to states. And some other news from the past month. So Braden Clark and John Calampalakis were named Golf All-Stars by the Salem News in addition to being All-Stars in the Northeastern Conference. And then we had some BHS Fall Coaches also be named Salem News Fall Sports Coaches of the Year, which were Coach Jellerson, Coach Dunleavy, Coach Wiley, and Coach DeLeon. We also had recent wins from our Wrestling, Gymnastics, Swimming, and Basketball teams. And our Robotics team has starting to have their meetings as they're getting ready for competition. Our Student of the Month for December were Anthony Pascarosa, a junior, Sydney Garvia, senior, and Carvel Kena sophomore. The heads of the Panther Press have begun Words by the Foot initiative, which is starting to display word art around the school, and this is done to raise money for the Bobby Forrester Fund. And some updates for Student Council, we are preparing for a winter ball which will take place in the first Friday in March, and we are working with the class of 2020 and possibly other class officers to put together this event. We are starting to work on an advertising and ticket campaign, and we are aiming to price tickets at $10, which is lower than what we've had at past dances. And we are working on food donations and decorations currently. Several Student Council members attended a leadership summit in Framingham, which was me, Adam Harrison, Wilkins Solly, who are some sophomore reps, and the summit was on diversity, inclusivity, and school climate. And it was also attended by members of the Climate Committee, and we listened to several speakers, an athlete from the Paralympics, and another athlete who was on Boston Pride National Women's Hockey Team. And we attended different workshops to learn how to lead with compassion and how to end all hate and bias in our school. And after going there, it was a great event, and we really hope to continue going here. And we have also planning, we're helping to plan the Martin Luther King Breakfast, and several Student Council members are going to volunteer at the event with setting up, checking people in, leading a group discussion, and we will have several student speakers. And the whole overall goal is to get others involved and to create a community-type event where people can engage with others and start discussions. So that's it. Thank you so much for that report.
Okay. Next, we have a report from our superintendent, Dr. Trocheck.
All right, thank you. The first item that we have on the report is overnight field trip, ROTC, to Elizabeth, New Jersey, and we have some members from ROTC here to talk to us more about. Let me, just that the administration does recommend approval of the overnight field trip for the ROTC fitness team to go.
Good evening. So the ROTC physical fitness team...
Can I ask you to go to the mic just for BevCam? We can hear you fine, but the TV audience would like to hear as well. Thank you.
Okay. ROTC has a physical fitness team, and the team plays pretty good this year, just in the local Beverly High School. So I wanted to take them to New York again this year. Did it last year. It's actually in Elizabeth, New Jersey, and I would like to take them on like a historical field trip, as I used to be stationed in New York, and there's a lot of stuff there, like nine eleven memorial stuff. So we'd be leaving on March twenty-sixth, right after high school is out, so about three o'clock. We'll drive straight down to Mystic, Connecticut. We'll stop off at Mystic Pizza. It's just like, I don't know, make them all watch the movie and then we stop. Drive to Mystic, and then we're going to head to Staten Island, Naval Ship, Shipping Lodge. It's like an installation on a base where it's a hotel. It's cheaper funding for us. So we'll stay there. The next morning, we'll get up, and we're going to do a couple of things in the city, and then we're going to go up to Ohika Castle and do a tour there. It's like a military history thing that goes with the Ohika Castle. And then we'll end up back into Manhattan, Times Square, probably stop into the Marine Corps recruiting offices there, where they have all their branches. They kind of see where they are in downtown Times Square. And then we'll go back. We'll have the kids in the bed early on Saturday morning. They're going to get up. We'll head over about six o'clock in the morning, and then they'll have their competition. The competition lasts until five or six o'clock, and then we'll head back to the school. There's going to be two chaperones, myself and Mrs. Gannon. We do have a team full of, it's six total members. We have six males, six females. We have enough male chaperones with the other teams that they requested us to bring another female if we could, so that the females could take care of the females and the males could help out with the males, because we have more. In ROTC, we have more male instructors than we do female instructors. So I think that's about it.
Okay. Thank you for that overview. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
You want to do the motion first?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mayor Kay Hill?
Madam President, if I could, I see a couple of the cadets here. Are you here out of interest, or are you here because you'd like to speak? Either way... out of interest, or are you here because you'd like to speak? Either way, it's up to you folks.
Well, I have, I brought, so Di Olivera Ismael, he's one of the captains for the males team. And the female captain couldn't be here today. It's Kochian, Viana Kochian. And Gannon Lindsay is here kind of to learn, because she's a sophomore this year, and hopefully she moves up to the captain position at some point. So if for whatever reason we have new ROTC instructors or something happened, one of them can come up here and know what they're supposed to talk about. So that's kind of why I have them here.
Yeah, I didn't want to put anyone on the spot. I just didn't want you to miss an opportunity if, in fact, you wanted to share. But that's, that's good. Thank you.
Do committee members have any additional questions? Thank you so much. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of letting our team go to Elizabeth, New Jersey? Okay, seven zero. Enjoy your trip. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. So the next item that I have is the draft of the school district calendar for 2020, 2021. That's a lot of twenties. And so I have sent it forward. It includes all of the required professional development days built in, and I guess I would entertain any questions, if anyone has any questions on the calendar itself.
In lieu of events that have happened this year, has there been any further discussion on possibly amending that first day of kindergarten to make it a half-day?
Great question.
To alleviate some of the stress for the kindergarten teachers and principals.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. So it's listed on the calendar as a kindergarten orientation, because technically whatever we hold will be an orientation. But in fact, the elementary principals are discussing, Mrs. Smith's in the audience, so I'm looking at her, are discussing, you know, instead of having what last year was a one-hour orientation on that first day, lengthening that so that there's opportunities to walk them through dismissal routines or rival routines. I will have more specifics on the actual hours of the orientation. It would still be an orientation, and it would still be on that day. But yes, there's a lot of discussion about what we can do and how we can utilize that time, just to make sure that we're able to kind of address all of the things we want to address on that opening day. So that's a great question.
Ms. Wiznick?
Can you speak, Dr. Trocheck, too? I think I thought that the Department of Ed is considering removing...
Yes. So the Department of Ed actually sent forward some guidance that they were eliminating what they were calling alternative learning opportunities. So I had direct contact with the department. I spoke with that office. I explained what we do and how we do it, and they said that it was still something that we could do.
Excellent. Fantastic.
And that as long as we had it on our calendar and we sent it forward. Because, mostly because it doesn't involve every student in shutting the building down, but we're accommodating, while the freshmen are coming in, some of the upperclassmen are mentoring those freshmen during that day, and we are making sure that we make all of the accommodations we need to for any students that are on special education or require any services that day. So they felt that it was a plan that they could accept, and so. I did make sure that I had approval from the Department of Ed, though. Thank you for asking.
I'll ask, are there any other concerns with this schedule or things that we might want to hold, or is this ready for a recommendation? Mayor Cahill?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Trocheck, just checking, has the Secretary of State's Office definitively set September first as state primary election day?
Well, I received a communication from Wes Slate before he left, that in fact, we received a written communication from him, that that was the day that we should be holding and listing as the primary day. So I don't have anything, I don't have anything more than that, but that, it came through that it was originally scheduled, I think, for like September twenty-something, twenty-eighth, and that they were moving it to September first. So we made that change. You know...
Free Labor Day. But we don't vote tonight, do we, on this?
Historically, it's fluctuated between January and February. By our policy, we have to vote by February. And I know I heard constituent concerns about what our calendar would look like.
Same.
So, I mean, we, well, let me say this, then. If, if, if in fact, that's the date, great. If we were later to find out that that primary day was rescheduled or set to some other time, we could revisit this, this schedule, yes?
I defer.
We started, we could...
But I mean, we certainly could as a school district. It would be a change, parents. But however it would be, we would still have the two, well, no, I don't know how we would, we would have to revisit the calendar.
The calendar's interesting this year with the Labor Day, and we have the two professional development days to start our schedule.
So the two professional development days is because we increased teacher conduct to one hundred and eighty-five days, and so those two days are at the beginning. It's also, contractually also, we cannot hold school on Friday before Labor Day. We're contractually obligated to start school before Labor Day if it falls on the date that it falls on September seventh. So there's some contractual obligations that we have around that. In terms of us, the primary day falling on September first worked very nicely, because it allowed us to have our two days on Monday and Tuesday. Students come for two days, and then we have traditional Labor Day, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
I hear you. I just, that's a surprising date. That's so early, but interesting.
Yeah, I was surprised when it came. But we did get official rec, from Wes Slate, we got an official notification that that changed.
He'd be sending it on from the Secretary of State's Office. Okay.
Ms. Wiznick?
Did the union already vote on that?
Yes. So I spoke with the, I met with the union, and the union has voted, you know, I mean...
So to the mayor's point, if we want to change this because that date changes, we're second, right? The union would have to vote.
I think we would talk with them about it. But I think, so I think I understand what you're saying. If it was a primary day for an elect, for the presidential election, and it was going to be held, we'd have to look at what we were doing. If it was going to, if they decide it's going to be on September ninth, and we have school scheduled for that day, we'd probably be wanting to revisit or have a conversation anyway. And I think that's probably the way it would go.
It may not, it may not be much concern anyway. The only way there would be an election, the only way there would be a primary election, right? Because the presidential primaries are in March. And it's a state election year, but it's not a statewide election year. It's not an every-four-year gubernatorial. The only way we would have a primary would be is if we had a contested primary in either party, one party or the other or both, for a state representative or state senator, I believe. So it...
And the other option would be that we would hold school, and we've done that before, and we've been able to, just depending on the size of the election and depending on what we expect. We have done that before, and we do have, you know, we could work on a plan for that. So, Donna?
In Wes, the email that he had sent, he said that the state primary was originally planned for September fifteenth, and that the legislature changed it to the first.
They have definitively changed it. There you are.
That was, yeah, that was from him in December.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So can we entertain a motion to approve this calendar?
So moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Do we have any more discussion? Questions?
I, Madam President, yes, I would just note, I know we had schools open when we had our local primaries, and I did receive quite a bit of feedback from parents at that school that weren't pleased with the fact that the school was, was open. And I know at the time, they spoke to the principal, and they spoke to Dr. Trocheck. And so I, you know, just something to consider. And I personally, I, if there is a primary or a chance of primary, I don't feel, you know, we should have schools open, since we pay so much attention to school security and all that great stuff.
Ms. Wiznick?
But not, is there a day on here that you're concerned about, Ms. Ferretti?
No, I just said I wanted to make that.
Okay. So all those in favor of the 2021 school calendar? We have seven to zero. Thank you.
Okay. And then the next item that I have is actually, it's echoing from down there. We have, I just want to share that we are, that the Martin Luther King Junior Day Community Breakfast will be held on January twentieth at the Beverly Middle School. And, you know, it's open for all. It will feature special guests, student performances, some music, community conversations, and the event is free and open to the public, and will feature coffee and a light breakfast. So just wanted to share that out as a point of information. And then I would refer to materials that you were sent in your packet regarding the North Shore Education Consortium. So the North Shore Education Consortium, we are a member of the North Shore Consortium, and as such, I represent Beverly on the board, and one of the requirements of the memorandum of agreement is to make sure that we share out the findings, that we, they have their annual audit findings as well as their annual report. So included in your packet, the information, there's a summary of the audit. All of the findings were positive. There were no negative concerns within the auditing of the finances of the North Shore Consortium. And the annual report that was shared with you just really highlights a number of the programs that are going on there. I would like to kind of just share with you in terms of Beverly participation. I can share from the 2018-19 year. In 1819, we had a total of forty-nine students that attended programs over the course of the year. I think this report indicated forty-three, but there were forty-nine maybe in or out throughout the year. Some students may have changed placements, or they may have aged out. So that's why this report indicated forty-three. The programs that we utilize most in the annual report are the North Shore Academy Upper and the KOG. Those are the programs that we utilize the most. And I think that those are the highlights. There are, there's lots of information around particular programs. Mrs. Splansky's here. If anybody has any, she offered to be here and answer any particular questions, if anyone has any particular questions about any of the programs that were included in the report.
Thank you, Dr. Trocheck. Committee, do we have any questions for Ms. Splansky?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Wiznick?
So if we had a, I don't know, do I lean over here and look at it?
She'll go right up to the podium.
I'll ask while you're wonky. If we had a child who, who was on the autism spectrum and wanted to do a vocational type of offering, would that child ever have a chance? So maybe the question really comes to you. Would that child have a chance to get into the North Shore Vooc, or would they quote-unquote "have to go into this program"? Like, is there a, is there a line? Is it, oh, we have both those choices, and depending on where the child is on the spectrum, we would recommend one over the other? More that we already have a waitlist for, for the Vooc, and therefore, if you're deemed as having some needs, we would therefore encourage this program instead?
Yeah. So Essex Tech is a program that's open to, for any student to apply. They obviously have an application process, and students have to be accepted. They do have special education supports within their programs, but they're not a special education school. They're a vocational school. So students who would go to the types of vocational schools that are referenced in the consortium program are students who require a higher level of therapeutic support and also benefit from the vocational opportunities. So they're not strictly vocational schools. They're more therapeutic in nature. So we do have students with autism who go to Essex Tech and who are successful, and then we have students who, you know, require different programs.
So that would be like an evaluation on your department's part to help make the right placement there, to, or to guide the student, the family, apply here or go to the other one?
Yeah. I mean, any student is welcome to apply to Essex Tech. That's something that is the choice of the student and the family. The consortium programs are programs for students whose needs can't be met within the district. So we always look at our own in-district programming first. And if we're not able to meet the level of therapeutic need, we would then refer to a consortium program.
And a family would maybe know that. They would know. So if, how is, I guess my question is, how would a family know that Norsh, that Essex, okay, what's its real name now?
Essex Tech.
No, it's North Shore.
That, that they couldn't have their needs met there. I think that's my question. How would they know that they therefore need to go to this alternative program?
So I guess I would say that that would happen through the application process. We don't make that determination. Essex Tech themselves would make the determination if the needs can be met through their programming, because they are, they are their own, they have their own special education.
So would it be fair to say, though, that we would need to make a recommendation for a student to attend the vocational programs that are included in the North Shore Consortium as part of the IEP process?
Correct.
Whereas a student, anyone is welcome to apply to Essex Tech, but we wouldn't make a recommendation for Essex Tech. So there's, that's the difference. They're two separate entities. And so one is a matter of anyone can apply to Essex Tech, and if you get in, you know, hopefully all of the services and supports that you need can be met there. However, we wouldn't, in an IEP meeting, make a recommendation for Essex Tech. We may, the only way you can attend the vocational programs that are in this is through the IEP process and to have a recommendation from us.
Okay, great.
Does that help?
And that would only be in a circumstance where we are unable to meet the need of the student within district. So we always look at our own in-district programs first. So it's not something that a parent can just opt into. It has to be a district referral.
Right.
Okay. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Splansky. Thank you.
Have there any other questions?
Do we have any other questions for Dr. Trocheck on her report?
So then the last thing that I have in terms of our superintendent's report is just the dates to remember. So, and you'll repeat them, I'm sure, at the end of the meeting, but Finance and Facilities on January twenty-second, Committee of the Whole on January twenty-ninth, Curriculum Instruction and Student Life on February fifth, and then on February twelfth, we have back to our regular school committee meeting, and that would include for the school committee beforehand, the student advisory.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And so for my first report as president this term, I'd like to highlight the outcomes of our organizational meeting held January sixth for the 2020-2021 School Committee. The board is as, as follows. I am Rachel Abel. I represent Ward One. I'll be serving as the role of president. We have John Malady to my left. He represents Ward Four. He'll be serving as our vice president. And Ms. Kelly Ferretti, representing Ward Two, will be serving as our secretary. In terms of our subcommittees, Ms. Lauren Wiznick, representing Ward Six, will be our Facility and Finance Chair. And again, Ms. Kelly Ferretti from Ward Two will be our Chair of the Curriculum Instruction and Student Life Subcommittee. We also have some standing committees for negotiations. I'll be serving as the Chair this term. And for our Policy Standing Committee, Ms. Ferretti, again, will be serving as our Chair. We have two new members. We have Kimberly Quelo from Ward Three. She's representing Ward Three. She's joined by Karen Robinson, representing Ward Five. Both of these new members will be joining the Subcommittee for Finance and Facilities, Facility and Finance, even after two years of that, I still can't get it right. Ms. Quelo will also be on our Policy Standing Committee with Ms. Wiznick and Ms. Ferretti. And Ms. Robinson, you'll be joining Mr. Malady and myself on the negotiating Standing Committee. We also have enjoyed applications from three citizen reps for each of our subcommittees. So we will have six additional citizen representatives joining us at the table at our subcommittees. The complete list of these assignments is available on the beverlyschools.org website. If you go to District Information under the School Committee, you will see the Beverly School Committee Standing Committees for January 2020 posted there. I did want to point out how well-represented we are with this term. I was taking note that we have members with students in all levels of our school district at this point. And two members actually have students in the elementary, in the middle, and at the high school. So Ms. Quelo and Ms. Ferretti, I don't know how you do it. So yes, keep doing what you do. And you obviously come wearing the hats of the parents for all three levels. And then Karen and I, we both are middle schoolers. And Ms. Wiznick, you have your last one in high school, and three Beverly Public School graduates. And not to Ms. Mr. Malady, who's just starting this wonderful journey.
Just starting.
Just starting this wonderful journey with our elementary. So a lot of experiences right here at the table this term. So not only are we representing our respective wards, we really have our, you know, sort of feet in the ground this term. Now, let's see. Next on my report, I had the pleasure of joining our new school committee members at the MASC, our Massachusetts Association of School Committees, at the Charting the Course, which is an overview program that they put together for new members and for everyone else. I think it's my third or fourth time attending, and each time I pick up more and more valuable information. So I would encourage all members to consider some of the new dates that they just posted, if they meet with your schedule. Basically, it was a survey course that is invaluable, in my opinion, covering everything from open meeting laws to ethics, to budgeting, to funding, and everything in between. So I don't know if Ms. Robinson or Ms. Quelo wanted to just echo my glowing recommendation for the program, but certain...
It was very informative. I did learn a lot, and I was grateful to go with you as well.
Yeah. And I thought it was wonderful how the main message we got out of it was... Yeah, and I thought it was wonderful how the main message we got out of it was the focus should always be, any decision we make should be based on student achievement.
That's so right, so right.
Just makes so much sense.
Okay. Well, it was good to, to have you both there. And also, we had Dr. Cherocheck join us, who was one of two superintendents that actually sat through the class. And, and it, you were recognized really for your participation because it's really important to have the partnership and the understanding, so we're all coming at it from the same, same point of view.
I mean, it's interesting, you can learn, I learned so many new things, so, I mean, there are, there are instances of it that, you know, you can't hear enough, and so you get a different flavor every time you go, so it was great.
I think I noticed you writing down as many notes as I was about action items and things to check, so, yeah, certainly something for everyone at those, those meetings. Okay, I also just wanted to highlight that MASCE is a paid resource, we, we do pay in, and with our membership, we have lots of benefits. They have a very good website. If anyone needs information, how to log in, we can communicate that, we receive the password for the lister, for instance, at, at the training, and I can share that. But they also have a conference in November, so I just want to plant a seed. I found that very valuable as well, to actually get together with other school committee members in the Cape in November, it's usually the first week, so we'll watch for information on that front as well. Okay. And then my third item is just an update for our Joint Council meeting. I conferred with our City Council President, and with his agreement, we will look to move the meeting out a bit, so that we could use the January twenty-ninth date for a Committee of the Whole. We've been putting an agenda together outlining a few different points. I will be meeting with Mr. Guanci later this week to settle on an actual date for the Joint Council. It is by charter, one of our early meetings, and we hope to make that a productive topic for us. So just note this slight change, our Committee of the Whole will actually begin at seven, and we will find a new date for Joint Council. Okay. That's the end of my report for tonight. We now turn to our committee reports, and I just wanted to note that we did move the committee reports up one slot from the agenda, so that we can look at these before we go to our communications and our community engagement. So without further ado, I appreciate Ms. Visnick stepping in as the new FNF Chair to give a report of our last subcommittee meeting.
So the Committee on Finance and Facilities last met on December eighteenth, at which time Ms. Abel was the Chair, so I'm going to attempt to give justice to, to a report from that particular meeting. We were blessed to have Dan Keefe, the Athletic Director, in to speak with us, and he gave a very nice overview. That meeting is on BevCam, I think the PowerPoint presentation that you went through should be there as well. Some very interesting facts off, off the top of that presentation is that the sports, the athletes are participating two-hundred-and-twenty days out of the year. We have twenty-eight different varsity teams. Any given team has both males and females on it. There have been some concerns about trainers, in particular, an opposing team lodged a pretty hefty complaint at some point in the past. So our contract relative to using trainers has been, I don't want to say the contract was amended, but adjusted, so we have more trainers covering the different sports. And when there's more than one sport happening at time on, on our campus, the trainer goes to the sport that has the highest likelihood of injury. And, but everybody has walkie-talkie, and they can, they have their little golf cart, and they can go over to the other location if need be. Mr. Keefe covered the concussion protocol as well as transportation. Again, last year, there were some, some number of complaints about teams not getting to their sports on time, and this year, that has been much improved. He also talked about the volunteerism and community service, and that is totally driven by the coaches. It's encouraged, but not mandated, but a lot of it's going on, so we love when, we love to celebrate things like that. And last but not least, he discussed the required training around drug and alcohol use, and so all athletes are required to sign some paperwork, and there's a meeting where both the athletes and the parents are encouraged to attend. Okay, so we have several items that need to, that count, that came out of our committee meeting. The first of which is a recommendation to approve gifts to schools that came in in November of 2019. It's a total amount of $7,204.44. I would entertain a motion to accept this free cash.
So moved.
John, was that you? Can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, is that supposed to be you? Is that supposed to be you?
I'm not really sure. I don't remember. Yeah, usually I say I'm looking for a motion, so I think that's appropriate. Okay. Do, do we have any questions about the gifts to schools in the total amount of $7,000?
$204.44.
And forty-four cents. Okay, all those in favor? We like to accept the money, so go for it.
I always like to say, who would ever vote no on that?
This is the first time the committee is seeing all of these, they were just in subcommittee before, so feel free to vote.
All right. Then the next item being brought forward is the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the approval of a new position. That position being for the FY20 school year, 1.0 full-time equivalent outreach counselor for Beverly High School. The funding for this position will come from an additional appropriation in the amount not to exceed $90,000.
So moved. I will second. Do we have any comments or questions about this position? Ready to vote, all those in favor? Seven-zero. Go ahead, Ms. Visnick.
The next item, the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the approval of the FY20 grants to the Beverly Public School be accepted. There are two grants, one in the amount of $10,000 from the DESE, Targeted Assistance Grant, and another in the amount of $5,000 from DPH, Comprehensive School Health Services.
I'd make a motion to accept those grants.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Seven-zero, thank you.
Okay, the next item, the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the approval of the following. Brian Ailes has informed us that the City Council has approved the Chapter Seventy Additional Funds of $320,831 be appropriated to the School Department, appropriated budget for FY20. The FY20 school budget appropriation with this adjustment will be $61,017,942.
I'd make a motion to accept the additional appropriation for FY20.
Can I second my own? Can I, am I allowed to do that?
Go for it.
Okay. I second.
Ms. Visnick, second. Do we have any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, one more. The Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the approval of the following budget transfer from the Admin Contingency Account AD70061013 to various other accounts in a total amount of $74,021.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
All right. Our next meeting, the next meeting of Facilities and Finance, Finance and Facilities, you got me doing it, Ms. Slansky, is next Wednesday night, at seven o'clock. Our thr, or the three public, the three members of the public who have volunteered have been informed, I've only heard from two of the three of them, so I have on my list of things to do to follow up with that third one. And I am elated to report that previous School Committee President and former Chair of FNF, Mr. Manzo, and I have discussed already building a, an FNF primer, primer, tomato, tomato, pick your poison, in conjunction with Jean, and so that we try to capture some of the institutional knowledge, and that when new people come onto FNF, they'll have it as a jumpstart. So I appreciate that Mr. Manzo's institutional knowledge as well as his writing expertise, and I'm excited to kind of put that in the category of a long-term goal. I don't, you know, and we're hoping to build it off of the questions, especially off the questions from the new members on FNF. Let that help drive the, the format of the document.
Absolutely, sounds good. Okay, and next we'll hear from Chair of our Curriculum Instruction Student Life, Ms. Ferretti.
Yes, neither of the subcommittees yet to meet the Curriculum Instruction Student Life or the Policy Subcommittee.
That's right. And I'll report out that the Negotiations Subcommittee did meet on Wednesday, January eighth, in executive session, and we are moving forward with our negotiations with our unit. Our next meeting will also enter into executive session, and it is posted for the twenty-third of January. Okay, and one final comment on our subcommittees and standing committees. We have previously had a Safety Committee, and during our organizational meeting, this ad hoc committee, we decided not to recreate it for this term, but rather have an update brought to perhaps Curriculum Instruction Student Life at a future meeting. Okay, so again, for those who are watching in the audience and members at home, the next item on our agenda and for the new members is our communications from School Committee members. This is where we typically report out communications that we've had from constituent parents or other citizens who share a concern. And let's open the table up. Do we have any communications from School Committee members? Ms. Robinson?
Yes, I had a constituent brought forward a concern regarding eligibility of a student from Essex Tech to play ultimate frisbee at Beverly High School. And I've brought it to the concern of the superintendent, and they are looking into it.
Thank you. Ms. Quelo?
I had a parent that came to me with a concern that their elementary school child did not have enough hot lunch. It wasn't enough for about twenty students. I did give them the phone number and referred them to Christina Lille. And I had a parent express concern to me about an issue with their child having an IEP and it not being instructed, I guess, in the classroom. And I referred her to the Special Ed Department at the McKeown School.
Thank you. And Ms. Visnick?
I just want to jump up and down and say I'm excited that we voted on the calendar because I think that has been my most frequently asked question, and it seems like every year it inches earlier in the year. It's like, you know, we just flipped to January, and people are already trying to plan their summer vacations and, and when they have to be back to come back to school. So I'm very excited that we, we voted tonight, despite, despite your concern, Mr. Mayor, about the primary day.
I think there are certain places in Orlando was having an end-of-August, early September deal, because I also was getting a lot, a lot of questions, so. Do you have any others? I have a couple more. I think many of us received some communications relating to coaching positions, and I think that's been addressed. I also had a constituent concerned that cursive was not being taught in our district, and I assured him, both of my fifth graders, when they went through sixth grade, had an excellent opportunity to learn cursive, so we do not have a secret code for at least a few of our, our students. So I, I hope that, put that rumor to bed, we do teach cursive in Beverly. Okay. And this next agenda item is my favorite. It's an opportunity for us to speak about our engagement with different opportunities within the district. It's always a pleasure to get out to see our student work, their performances, their athletics, their scientific endeavors. Would anyone like to share some of their community engagements? Start with Ms. Robinson, we'll work our way down.
Okay, so I had the opportunity to attend a couple of PTO meetings in the past couple of weeks, so over at North Beverly, Paul Bedrow, who heads up the Cross Country Series, it's citywide cross-country series, he announced the dates, and they are April twenty-sixth, May third, May tenth, with a rain date of May seventeenth. It's $10 per race, $25 for the whole series. And the last race, it's parents versus kids, and it's really, it's really fun, and it's a great way for all the kids in the community to get together, very low-key, but they run through the woods behind North, North Beverly, so it's a lot of fun. And then over at HANA, they're piloting a program for healthy habits for mind and body, and they're specially targeting second graders, because that seems to, between second and third grade, that seems to be when children start, stop being so focused on me and more focused on what other people think of them. So I thought it was a great time to be working on focusing on sense of self and body, and it's a kickoff to the Hooray for Health program that I believe is in March.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. You go.
Madam President, thanks. Just want to speak up about, a week ago Monday, we all took our oaths of office in a beautiful ceremony. We are, our junior ROTC brought the colors, and our, I always get the, the title right wrong, rather, concert choir?
Vocal ensemble.
The vocal ensemble and the jazz band both performed wonderful renditions of, of music that really made the whole ceremony much more worth our while. Much more enjoyable, I guess, right? It was wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick.
A couple of different things. Beverly High Girls Basketball had a youth night, and the ROTC goes there now regularly, and a, a young man played the anthem on the trumpet all by himself and did a fantastic job. You know, I, I often bring forward concerns about the boosters, and what I will say is that that particular booster organization got a community partner to purchase shirts, and so every youth player that came in, in their, excuse me, in their youth T-shirt, got a new T-shirt. And, and so some of the T-shirts say, like, "You wish you could shoot like a girl," and it's just a really nice community thing to have the younger children watch and cheer on the older children and, you know, get a sense of, "Someday I want to play on this court." A very nice evening. The Beverly Education Foundation grant cycle is open, so if you go back to your PTOs or if you know anybody who's involved and wants to submit a grant, that's happening. The mayor and I had an incredible opportunity just before winter break to go into a kindergarten classroom. It was deemed Ginger Garden, actually, Dr. Cherocheck and our Assistant Superintendent of Schools were also there. And it was a very cool project-based learning for kindergarteners, it was so cute, where they learned about a, a building permit. And they learned the fact that the permit means it gives you permission, and so they built a whole bunch of gingerbread houses without cutting down any trees, so there was a little climate conversation in there, and it was, it was very fun. And then they, they had a whole bunch of presentations. So thank you to Cindy Tumilio for organizing that and inviting us in. Centerville PTO has had a meeting, and they have another one tomorrow morning, and their blood drive is coming up. So if you want to give blood and you haven't signed up yet, as of this morning, there were still some open spots. Again, the mayor, I've seen you on a table there before, so that's a little nudge down there, that into the table.
Already booked.
Tomorrow, tomorrow we have the Health and Wellness Meeting, and one last shout-out is that the Charter Review Commission, this is the year that the city reviews the charter, and so if anybody is interested in being on that, they, they should contact President Guanci. City Council President Guanci.
I'll do a couple more, just, just a couple of things happening tomorrow night, right? We have our middle school choral concert that's been rescheduled from before the holidays. That's at seven-thirty tomorrow night, is it? No, seven, sorry, that's at seven...
Sorry, that's at seven tomorrow night. And prior to that, here on the first floor will be our, um, Cove Elementary School Art Exhibit is kicking off tomorrow night. So excited to see what they've got to show us.
Yes, I'm excited to be at the Choral Make-Up Concert. I hear the, um, the list includes some Halloween selections as well.
Oh, gosh.
We're going to cover all the seasons tomorrow night. Um, and just prior to that, um, in addition to what Ms. Visnick said about health and wellness, we also have a Middle School PTO meeting, which promises to be short, because many of the parents will be joining the choral, um, offering. And, um, the Martin Luther King Junior Breakfast, as Ms. Charochek said, uh, is something I'm looking forward to on Monday and hope to see a lot of our community friends there. Okay. That successfully concludes our first meeting of the new School Committee. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Ferretti? Thank you, Ms. Quelo. All those in favor? Thank you so much. Have a great evening.